Are you all able to hear me?
Oh, I need to focus.
Um, hello.
Hi.
Um, okay, I'm going to, let's establish the core. I think Josh is online, but do we want to take a call here?
Yes, is Molly enjoying? Present.
Present and accounted for.
Uh, Lisa, uh, our chair Lisa is, uh.
She's running late. Yes, she is. She had to work until seven, so she wanted me to kick things off, but she said she could get her off the lap.
Uh, Dan Grisco.
Here.
And then Josh back, can you hear us?
I sure can. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna keep you on mute in the background while I'm working.
Okay, and can you tell us where you're joining from and why?
Uh, I'm joining you from multiple locations at the moment and I'm working.
All right.
Then of course Chair, uh, Shannon Strasser.
Here.
Vice.
Um, is anybody taking, um, minute, meeting minutes?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Um.
Take notes.
What's that?
I'll take notes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so the challenge the core and, um, do we agree to the agenda as, as written?
There's really nothing on it other than comp plan discussion, correct?
Yes. So can I get a, a note?
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes.
As written?
As written.
I second that.
Okay.
What's though?
Yes. Our favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Um, and then moving on to relevant actions from town council.
Couple of things to mention. One would be this last week was the first meeting of the council in the new year, like it was our first meeting and we had our two new counselors there and at some point it would be good for the new counselors obviously to learn about what we do in planning commission. We also had a conversation about the safety committee that was interesting. Often people who are a part of a committee will champion something and so there was Eileen is no longer there and so there was a debate about people had different opinions about the committee and the only thing I would add as a note would be that often people are missed.
Are you talking about emergency preparedness?
Yeah.
They're talking about dissolving that?
There was a discussion about some people thought it was unnecessary. Some town counselors.
Whoa, really?
Yeah, that I didn't, that was not my view, but well, my, the reason I brought it up was.
See, it's going down and ask it.
Well, the reason I brought it up was, was to say often it takes a person, whether it's on our committee or whether on the town council, people are often bring an idea and sometimes the idea isn't, isn't as strong without them there.
Do you, do you think every town counselor will have a committee of some sort or a pet project that they're working on?
Typically, that's, I was, one of the things I, I've said this to people a lot, John Snotty said this years ago to me, he said, you have to, you can only champion something, you have to, in terms of supporting or going after, like to make something happen, kind of find your niche, so to speak. Actually, I was sharing, I actually shared that with the town counselors is trying to find your place, you know, what can you do to serve the town? I don't, Mr. Mayor, do you want to comment on that since you're here?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, anyway, so we had a conversation about.
Two new counselors, we haven't exactly determined what would be best fit for them as far as either being on a committee or heading a committee.
Cause I'd hate for someone else to have to champion something at the town council.
I had, I want to ask you this. The thing that says that a committee must be chaired by a council person.
So. That's pretty convenient.
If Eileen is interested in continuing that committee, I'd be more than happy to have her serve as head of the committee and if one of the new people want to serve on that committee, then we'll put them on it.
Well, you should talk to her about it.
Yeah.
You got away with that kind of thing.
It's gonna kind of.
Yeah.
And she's been out, she was out of town for, she's just coming back, but, but to, but to say, the other thing to say about it would be in there, it, there are times we have, we as town counselors share different opinions and trying to say it in a fair way. Different opinions were shared about that committee and my point of bringing it up was mostly to say it was a significant conversation about it and.
You feel like you're kind of deadlocked? I mean, that you're not going to move forward with that.
Well, tha- that was a I might say I was taken by surprise by the response to it. It's because basically several town counselors were saying it was unnecessary. Chief actually was explaining that he was contacted by the county related to the snowstorm in a way he'd never been contacted before. I'm thinking I'm saying this correctly, right Javier? And he was happy about that. He wasn't trying to enter into the fray.
No, I thought.
He was just explaining as a fact.
Away, yeah.
And I actually made a point because I was a sign violator. We had an old, you really couldn't see the sign and we got one of the new signs and it looks nice and I was making a point. I've gone from being a pseudo violator to being, and I thought it was, it's been a good project to have things out there and at any rate, that has been a that was a conversation that we had. And the other thing the mayor was kind of getting at, next week is a planning meeting. Every year we have an organizational meeting and it's like, it's not a given, I will be on this committee. It could be somebody else's on this committee, like we'll decide next week or the mayor or the council will vote. So as each new council, people decide, so it could be that it's a shift or that's really the will of the council to see how that's done. I, I was originally put on here, I always blame you for that, Mr. Mayor. But, but again, so we'll have a meeting next week and it could change what's assignments that people have, both the new people and the people that here. So that's our organizational meeting that we have every time there's a new council and this is a new council. With technically three, you would say three new members.
Yeah.
Then gets right to say that, even though Eddie's the same person, he's in a new position.
Who's vice mayor? Is Alex vice mayor?
Eddie has them now, we have, we have to make that decision next Tuesday.
That would be a new.
Oh, that's it.
At any rate, that would be from the, uh, thing.
That's strange, because don't you have it written that it needs to be the person who got the most votes on town council?
It's not, that was, that was by practice that was done in the past, but that was not, it's not a rule, like so by practice that was done like for a while, but it's not been a it's like, it's not, it's not in the.
Not in the.
It's the skeptical way.
Yeah, it, it was, definitely was, it definitely was.
Alrighty.
I was just giving my report of the town council and we've, when you were away, we solved all of the world's problems.
That's amazing. So can we adjourn?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright. I will second that.
Alright, thank you very much. I'm sorry that I was. Oh, great. Hey, Josh.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, good. Good to see you.
Good. Yeah, you too. I'm working, so I've got you all on mute, but I'm listening as I shall go.
Um, matters from the public? No one, any correspondence?
No. No. Not done.
Alright, new business, none, old business? I love the tribal background music. Lincoln, we're ready.
Yes, hello, I'm, I'm here online.
Hey.
Everyone. Just got back from a trip, so, uh, I saw that, uh, a few folks sent me some emails over the last day or two. Um, sorry, I didn't have a chance to get back to you until uh, just this afternoon, but, um, glad to be here online. Um, basically, uh, Lisa and Molly and I met twice, uh, since the last meeting to talk about the text, uh, uh, in our weaving approach, this, uh, intersection between the goals and principles. So I'll just, uh, share my screen Javier, if that's okay.
Yeah, I gave you permission, Lincoln. It should be.
Okay. And I also sent you a document for printing. Um, don't know if you saw that earlier. Um, I just emailed it to you, yeah.
Print it right now and share it with, uh, commission.
Okay, I'll just give a, a brief overview. Um, so if you can see, see my, my screen, um, basically I'll, I'll go to full screen here. The, the objective of our last month of, uh, collaboration was really to focus on writing, uh, different columns of the text, explaining what these goals are and how they intersect with the principles, okay? So for instance, I, uh, wrote both goal number three that I have highlighted in red and also goal number four, uh, next to that. And then, uh, Molly and Lisa were chugging away on, uh, goal number one and goal number two. Um. Go ahead.
Just state the goals for the moment and, uh, zoom in a little bit until I can get a handout out, just for context.
Sure, so uh, these goals have been the same, uh, for, uh, quite a while. Uh, we haven't changed these goals. But you might remember, um, right around Thanksgiving time, uh, we all, uh, worked collaboratively and we wrote two bullet points for e- every intersection of a, a goal and a principle. So I'll just, uh, restate the, the goals as Javier just mentioned. Goal number one is build out infrastructure. Goal number two is provide housing choices. Goal number three is create community connections. Goal number four is demonstrate value and have fiscal wellbeing. That's financial wellbeing for a, a town or municipality. And then principle number one is retain small town character. That's a, that's a crowd pleaser for practically everyone we talk to.
Chickens.
Yeah. Uh, principle two is foster environmental stewardship. Everything from the Van Cleef Nature Area to, uh, the watershed, so on and so forth. That's also a crowd pleaser for the town. And then principle number three is, uh, enable growth, uh, because from our survey results, we found that basically a vast majority of folks in town are, um, positive about growth, but it, it just matters about what type of growth. Is it small growth or big growth? Is it, uh, maybe growth could be inferred as just filling out a vacant storefront. That could be a form of growth for some people. So we ha- have to be a little bit specific when we recommend, uh, growth, because some people are very concerned about too much growth as we, we've all learned. Okay, um, so that's just a recap of the goals and the principles and how these intersect, okay? And then as, um, I mentioned, we sat down and we, we wrote bullet points for, for the intersections. And this is really a, a prioritization process, because some of these intersections, we had, we could have a lot of things we want to talk about. However, we really have to boil it down to the two most important things. Uh, so for instance, here it's right size infrastructure, um, and then improved sense of arrival to town. That's kind of what we gather and we put there as the two most important things, okay? So, um, when Lisa and Molly and I were talking, we, we really had to strategize about how we went about this because we could either, uh, right, left to right or top to down. So we, we talked and talked and talked and, um, if, you know, we, we also have these overarching, uh, bullet points, increase safety and quality of life in town, provide housing for a cross section of society, um, and then increasing town vibrancy by creating spaces and organizing more events. Um, and then leverage county services and finances for proportion of town population. Okay, that was the last one. So we, we basically decided that it's easier to start with the goal as the overarching thing and then write downward. So we talk about introducing, create community connections up at the top of the, this section of the document. And then we write about every bullet point in sequence. And we just mentioned when we're coming to a certain intersection, we say, by the way, this bullet point has to do with a certain intersection. So, uh, that's, that's the approach we, we decided to, to go along with, okay? So Javier's printing out the, this weaving approach, so you can have it in front of you while we further discuss. And, um, I've also copied the goals three and four, all of that text into a Word doc and, uh, Javier, um, is printing it off for you.
Hey, Lincoln.
Discuss that. Uh-huh, go ahead.
I'm sorry that I'm skipping forty steps to ask you this question, but uh, being on the town council side and as this document is nearing completion, would you say it's fair or tell, correct me if this is a wrong statement, once this document is done, it would be wise, it'd be prudent of the town to do some of these things, correct?
Yes, I, ideally, um, most of these items that are recommended, we would be able to measure the results, so uh, in one year, two year, three year, you could look back and, and check how much progress has been made. Um, and since, you know, there's a, a, uh, and a finite number of intersections, there are a finite number of bullet points. It's relatively easy to say, you know, we've achieved, um, for instance, uh, three out of the twelve, uh, intersections um, over two years, for instance, we could, we could set a goal in terms of pacing and so on and so forth. If that's something that the town council would want to do.
Well, Lincoln, just again, let me just ask you the same question again. So often what happens on the council is things come to us or somebody has an idea and they pursue it. One of the benefits of doing a thorough job in the comprehensive plan is to say we've got the collective ideas of everybody through this whole process, almost like a bingo card. Now let's do this piece, right? Let's do this piece or that. In other words, we can say with some certainty, there's agreement on a general concept, maybe not specifically. And the reason I'm sug- I'm suggesting that is we as a town council in the coming months, when we receive this document, we can either choose to throw it in the file, which is what typically happens to a document like this, or we can say, okay, this is the collective wisdom of the town. How do we want to follow up on this and let the conversation of the counselors lead us to, you know, this one or that one or whatever? Is that a fair thing to say?
Yes, and, and also, um, some things will have the right timing s- at certain times throughout the future. For instance, um, opportunities might arise, uh, to use the town's ABC licenses at an event. So you might want to prioritize partnering with an, an event management company to kick that, uh, idea off as potentially a way of generating some funds and, and creating a little bit more vibrancy in town by leveraging those ABC licenses, for, for instance. So you, you might choose to, to tackle one of these, uh, earlier and then another one later. Um, and then some might not be feasible the next five years, but you still keep it on the, on the paper because opportunities might arise f- further afar.
Well, that's kind of why I was asking whether town council members had certain projects that they worked on, whether they have a committee or not. Um, it's my expectation that they would be working on something in particular and this might be a good area for some of them to join the party.
And I, I really like, uh, Dan, you're, you're mentioning the bingo card. I think that's really a good analogy because, um, politically some, um, some ideas will align at certain times and you can, you can definitely, uh, cross off a, an intersection with a bingo, uh, token.
Well, I'm sorry that safety isn't a big issue with them because I think some of the, the safety issues would be nice to to have in place. People are very worried about the traffic and all that.
And I mean, one, one aspect we were talking about during the earlier sessions was, uh, even having a, a generator for a town hall was one concern. I think, um, uh, Eileen brought up, um, and I, I can't quite recall if we, we wove that into the text, but, um, that's just an example of i- important infrastructure that could be considered.
The, the reason Lincoln too, that I'm also just bringing this up, you and Lisa and Molly have done and Sa- and Shannon, I mean, all of you have done a lot of work on this, much more than me, uh, simply put. And the time that has been put into this is not done to create a document that again sits somewhere and gets dusty. It's now with this is the collective wisdom of the town. Again, I'll just use that analogy. There certainly are places of fear, even though six, you know, on the council have everybody, we have all different ideas, but we certainly intersect in some places on here to figure out how we can work together. And I mention it because we did, not this project, but we did something like this about six or seven years ago, but we've not done something like this before and this presents an opportunity for us both when the planning commission goes, does this and presents it to the council, because again, we have new, got new people, old people, I mean, people have been around a while on the council. So at this stage, we're finishing our work as a planning commission, but our real, the idea in good service to the town is that this will be a document that is used to some, it, it's going to guide us. We're going to take action on this. That's what we want to do. Again, I'm not saying where we are, how we are, that's up to a lot of people, but this is the collective wisdom and I'm, I'm just saying, making a point that this document is not intended to be something that collects dust. It's intended to be done something. So as we finish it, it's, it's intended to be a document of action.
Yeah, at some point, that's perfect. At some point it becomes an action plan for staff and not, well, for the town in, in totality, it's the same as any other plan that's your multi-year planning ahead.
Well, how do you, how do you all deal with people who want to just change it all? They don't like it at all. What does town council do about that? Do you start rewriting?
The, the count, I mean, as counselors, we have the ability to do that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm more, I'm more making the point probably not wise to do that because the collective wisdom of this process, I, I would argue I'm, i- in a sense, in humility, simply saying our job is to find out what the collective desire of the town is. And as we find out with the, they may, it may match mine or not, doesn't matter what mine is, it matters what the town is. And as we present this, we present it to. We present it to the community, not just the counselors, but the community now that we have this. People in the town have every right to come and say to the counselors, why aren't you doing this?
Yeah.
You know, so and that's, and I would encourage people to come and say that to me, like, why are you guys not doing this? That's a, that's a legitimate. We, I, let's do something about this. You've said that many a time, you know, what are we going to do? Like, are we going to do this?
Now we should stand up.
Instead of just talk about it, let's do so.
Well, hopefully it goes okay.
Well, a- again, I'm I'm only mentioning it again because I'm mindful myself saying. On the, on the other side, saying, how can we do this? It, and even the point I was saying before. I I used to spend a lot of time on the park, I don't at the moment. But I I myself have thought, where can I be helpful in this process? And some of it is trying to figure out. Where do we coalesce? I mean, it doesn't do us any good to, you know, pick things we all disagree on. We need to figure out where do we agree.
Yeah.
So we can, we can, it's hard enough when everybody agrees to do something.
Yeah.
Let alone, you know, oppositely, so.
Um, we don't, we don't really have somebody that takes care of Van Cleef, is that correct? Like, someone who goes out and. I mean, I guess Jam does.
The the maintenance person. In in the current function of the system. It's more responsive than proactive. I think I would, that would be fair.
I decided to go up there after it snowed and um, it was hazardous.
Can I suggest that we get back?
Sorry, 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 Shannon.
Just want to keep this.
Yep, do it, go for it.
Well, I would just like to add that, yeah, this is um, also a a process, not only for. Collective wisdom, but also collecting wisdom, because um. Let's say, for instance, a developer wants to talk about trails in the northeast part of town and easements. Um, we also have some text in this, in this section of the document, it really talks about easement considerations. And also maintenance considerations. Um, what we learned from Mr. Heisen, you know, Mr. Heisen is very focused on um, efficient maintenance of the town. And if we add a whole lot of trails to the town, that that could be a larger burden for the town. So in that section of this weaving approach, it's mentioned that any future easements through residential areas. For instance, should be uh maintained by an association of those homeowners. Not the town itself, that's a recommendation. And of course, this is just a draft text, so uh we we're here to talk about this all today.
Lincoln, where was that put in? Which goal?
So that's uh. Under. The. Um, create community connections. That's the very last paragraph, I believe. So on what I, I, you you just have in front of you. Um. Yes, um. The first, number four. Work with partners to safeguard nature and trail links between Van Cleef. And housing areas by using association maintain easements.
Cause I can mention that in the housing um section as well.
Yeah, I would recommend that's important, because if the town has uh, you know, additional. Uh, mile or two added up in totality of trails, that's a lot of maintenance for uh. Someone to to worry about and mulch and, you know, other infrastructure, culverts, so and so forth. So if an uh association was uh. Required to take that over uh perpetually, I think that could be a a long-term uh cost savings, but. Because those residents are really going to be also the ones benefiting from that a lot too, yeah. So I I would recommend, the, yeah, I I totally agree that this is collective wisdom, but it's also collecting that wisdom. So when an opportunity arises for the town to to have an easement, uh. That the town's able to take a breath and look at this, this uh document. And just double check, are we considering all the the important aspects that we thought about a couple of years ago? Um, and then from that basis, you're able to make a an informed decision. Not spur of the moment, um, when things are, you know, quite active, for instance, yeah. So um. That's just one example, um, so that's in the document, uh glad to have your feedback, glad to. For the discuss or amend as as you guide me. Um, so this is just the approach for the the first two. Um. Goals, like I mentioned, number three and four, uh Lisa and Molly, feel free to. To jump in however you'd like uh with yours, um. Also Javier, I know you you're just going to fill in a little bit about the fiscal responsibility section. Uh, yeah, I recommend just providing a a little bit of, you know, information about the annual town budget in terms of the percentage. Used for s- certain activities, yeah.
I'll update the document, I have an old draft from last year with all the relevant information, so I just need to plug it in.
That's great. So so anyone that reads this document can see, okay, the town spends spends a certain uh amount of. Money or percentage of money on. Infrastructure improvements, let's say sidewalks, it's going to be a very uh low percentage. They spend a a certain amount of money on administration versus uh policing, so on and so forth, yeah. Just to paint the larger picture, that the town doesn't really have a lot of extra assets at the moment to spend on. Infrastructure such such as sidewalks, so there needs to be other ways of finding those funds if if that is really a priority. Uh, also in that uh, that uh, that column, the. Um, demonstrate value and have fiscal well-being. There's also the capital improvements program uh that ties into the the budget for the town, so that's that's explained there.
Lincoln, just a a question for you, just you just mentioned the question about the grants or about the the various funding. I would be interested later that you don't have to explain it right now, but wait, because you've done this process. Something you might do that would be helpful for the council might be. I see these types of grants as possible in the future, you, not that you're you're not pursuing them, but. Because you have the knowledge that you do, you might say this type of grant or that type of grant might be something. I see that what I learned. So anyways, at some point, it'd be interesting to hear from you. Cause you've done all of this and you, the knowledge that you have, especially with Javier, that would be really helpful in the future.
Sure, um. I believe I I sent an email, uh, maybe it was to Lisa and Molly while we're having our 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 textual dis- discussions over the last. A few weeks, but I I met with a grant uh writer uh here on Tangier Island, um. About two weeks ago. Um, and she used to write grants uh full-time for the city of Crisfield, Maryland. It's a coastal city here on the eastern shore. Uh, a city of one thousand two hundred, so she was a full-time grant writer. And uh, her advice was that there's. Uh, plenty of money out there and you can, towns can go out and get it, but the real challenge is implementation, once you get the money. But once you you build this uh rapport or a track record with uh grantors. It's relatively easy to keep the 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 funds flowing, but again, that's. The implementation challenge uh for especially small towns with limited capacities, limited staff, that's that's the real challenge, yeah. But glad to highlight a few uh low-hanging fruit grants, I guess we'd call them, uh, that the town could consider.
I mean, it seems kind of harsh, but maybe uh. You know, if you had someone who came in and they were on a six-month trial period. It's like, go out there and get the the money necessary to pay your salary. You know, and do that within six months, you know, that kind of thing. Obviously putting it in a better light, but um, that way. You know whether this person is going to be able to bring in the kind of money that we're hoping to have. Or.
Definitely, that could be a model.
Yeah, I'm I'm just thinking about the fact that we don't have. Another staff position at this point in time, but I think that that would be a huge. Coup for someone to manage the grants, do all the grant accounting and. Um, to actually look for and reapply every year or whatever needs to be done.
So what happened in Tangier, uh, a resident has donated two thousand five hundred dollars. As an initial salary for the uh, the grant writer. So once uh the first grant is obtained. Uh, and this great grant writer has some strong relationships in this region. Um, once the the first grant is um. Obtained, then uh their salary for the grant writer will be paid by this this new grant.
Okay.
So in theory. It, the the grant writer basically uh pays for themselves and a lot more. If they're a successful grant writer, do you know what I mean? Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it, just uh, so good context and not the nonprofit context. I've often heard that you would hire a staff member to do development and then the intention is a year and a half is the quote-unquote turnaround.
Sure, sure. I'm just, I'm thinking in the context of the town. We don't have any money to pay anybody, but if we put it in that kind of light, it, that would be great.
Yeah, I think that's a a good uh thing to keep in mind, uh, Dan, thanks for bringing up grants and grant writers, yeah.
But I think one thing to consider, um, since we've been working on goal three and four and intersections is. Uh, we're kind of working backwards now thinking about uh working on goal uh. Two and one, uh, is the next logical. And then Lincoln, before I cut you off, I also shared with the the planning commission. Uh, an update from the uh zoning map, uh, working with Jack. Uh, and I sent.
Awesome.
A copy of it.
Awesome, great.
I have a question for you, Lincoln.
Okay.
Sorry, um, I was looking at the build-out infrastructure, um, and under enable growth. Um, something tells me that eventually we're going to have to. Deal with the infrastructure like the grocery store and the things like that. Is that usually something that ends up on their end of things? Or do we actively get involved in making sure that that's going to be a good thing going forward?
Well, um, I I don't quite understand what you mean about infrastructure for the, you said supermarket.
Well, I'm thinking about the infrastructure that we have here in town, so there are certain things that are going to have to grow if we have growth. If we have more people who live here and stuff like that. Are there things that we? Pay attention to when we're looking at enabling growth through. Um, the infrastructure build-out.
Well, I I'd have to say that the commercial spaces in town are, seem to be um. Uh, quite substantial for the the population of the town and the region, so. Food line is is quite a big space and you've also got Dollar General. So it doesn't seem like you're you're lacking any commercial facilities at this point in time and you have some, some vacant stores downtown, um. So I, I, it doesn't seem like you're you're needing to have any economic development in in that regard.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's more about um. Development of of more infrastructure, so. The, you know, different tax modalities could uh gain funds to improve intersections. Because if the state and the, the county are not dedicating uh funds to in improving certain intersections. Uh, surrounding the the supermarket, for instance, and an intersection wouldn't necessarily be the responsibility of an existing supermarket. But however, if you had a a new Walmart come in. Then uh, that could be a discussion with that new development uh through uh, maybe a proffer would be offered by by a. Supposed Walmart hypothetically, but uh, you know, I don't see a supposed Walmart coming in. I think the supermarket is is pretty much there how it is, um.
Okay.
That was a previous discussion.
I should go into something similar to that, but that's fine.
Yeah.
So on regarding goal number two, provide housing choices, I um. I think principle one was really easy to jump into, principle two is pretty easy to jump into. Principle three, I started to kind of run out of steam because I felt that it was a little redundant. With some of the recommendations in two. So for example, convert underutilized in principle two, convert underutilized structures to housing uses. Which is very similar to the next recommendation within that same principle, which is. Update ordinances to incentivize. Blah, 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 accessory dwelling units, so. I felt that was a little redundant and I understand the nuances, so I was able to add the text to kind of explain the difference. But then also principle three, we're mentioning. Update ordinances again to enable increased residential and mixed-use density, so I think that really is redundant with. With environmental steward, and of course, yes, I can explain it in light of enabling growth, but. I don't think there's a whole lot to say on that, so it's, I think it's just going to be a small paragraph. I I dr- I sent a draft over to you an hour ago, um, and I can definitely tweak it, but I think I'm a little. That I think principle three is going to be a little short for me.
Great, um. I haven't had a chance to look at that yet, but um. Just, just wondering, uh, off the top of my head, did you find a a space to really talk about the differences between? Rental housing versus uh, uh, ownership housing?
Um, that's, that's, I see that that difference here in enabling growth that talks about long-term housing needs, what I. Um, what I talked about was accessory dwelling units as rentals and. Um, perhaps on new construction, allowing. The houses to have. Um, like a basement or or some part of it allowed to be rental by righty. Um, but I I guess I should specifically talk about the need for. Stable permanent housing and the need for rental housing, that's, that's. A distinction that I didn't go into, so I can talk about that a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, just recalling, uh, Javier, some of our discussions with with two different development groups in, that are looking at town. One in the northeast of town is potentially looking at more uh owner-purchased housing for long-term housing. And then the developer around the gas station area is looking at potentially more. Um, short-term housing for, you know, rental for workers, uh, working class and so forth, um. So even dis- distinctions like that could be useful to kind of draw out different ideas, um.
Looking at Lincoln and Lisa, looking at this, so you're under goal number two, principle number three, enabling growth. I think it's fair to say that. Was where a lot of our biggest tension was as a town recently. So my my suggestion would be just however we word that, we are in agreement, so to speak, you know, amongst. Everybody with differing ideas that we, because we want to be. Mindful of what happened in the past, so to speak, and make sure we're clear. Of what this means, what we think the consensus is on understanding it, so. In other words. I'm just suggesting unders, like, what do, what can we learn from what happened? So that we address this, because it would, you would think this is going to be the area of contention again, so to speak. So I would just want to make sure, however we do it, we've, we've done the best we could do with that.
Well, I think, you know, the co- the former comp plan talked about having an excuse. I think that can be highlighted if that is what we want. I don't know if people have changed their mind about that or not.
You know what? That's helpful also, thank you, because. It it is possible that that. Um. Like modalities changed since COVID, so it's helpful to talk about mixed use and how people are using that term, but what does that mean? Post-COVID.
Yeah, I I also am thinking about uh Mr. Lawless, you know, Mr. Lawless was living above Baines and then walking, uh. I don't know, fifty steps to the town office, and I think that's great livability, right? Who what, who doesn't want to live above a coffee shop, grab some coffee and go to work? And not have to drive. I think that's a great asset, there's few places in Charlottesville you can do that, I mean, even downtown Charlottesville. There's not a lot of residential that's affordable, especially, so I think that's a really big draw that. Uh, Scottsville has as an asset, you know, that livability and walkability, yeah.
Would, would, oh, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, would would principle number two for that issue? Get a little bit more into stuff like lighting or uh design that's more environmental? I mean, is that what it is intended to do, like, uh, under goal two, principle two?
Yeah, you know what? I didn't, you're right, and I didn't do enough on that. Okay, thank you, that's helpful, so.
Yeah, and another thing that comes to mind is, um, I think we were talking a little bit about the social club. Uh, or any, any uh thing downtown, um. They should have, you know, engagement with the street, you you don't want to have like, um. For instance, this is just a hypothetical situation, a a bar that is very inward-looking. But it has no engagement with the street, there's no windows or. but it has no engagement with the street, there's no windows or anything. It's just all boarded up.
I don't think it's hypothetical.
But that's that's that would be goal three, principle two, right? I mean, just we'll get in the right square here. I'm talking, I'm actually talking goal two, principle two, but
Okay, gotcha.
So but yes, I think what you just said is correct. For that square, what I was trying to get at would be, again, like night lighting or it would get it also into protecting trees or buffers or native plants, that kind of stuff, and how we would incorporate that into, because we would wanna also I I will just say this, I was telling um Molly, it it's actually worth saying this. When I I have two daughters that live in Hawaii and we spent a couple, we we were at the beaches a lot and I was struck by the microplastics on the beach. I'd been there before and actually did a did a little video about it, but it was troubling to see. And you know, that's an issue that I I made my own little video about it because of it and that's in the ocean, but I mean, it really was the prettiest beaches. There were microplastics all over the place, which surprised me. I had not seen that before, but but all I was gonna say is coming back to us, we are very much keepers of the James River. And so what we do, we wanna make sure that we cover this and talk about what that looks like more here and and again, from a life perspective, from a or even our gas stations. I mean, I I live on the other side of the street of it, but we would wanna make sure that we are as environmentally careful as we can. We don't have spills that go into the, you know, to the water. Uh so just on this particular front, you know, just that we're we're I I I have to think, Lincoln, this is a great grid, by the way. I really like this grid. I think it's really simple and helpful. And Lisa's gonna word it perfectly, so it's gonna be great.
Thank you.
I think I think Lisa and and Lincoln, I think a good example, for example, spitballing with goal two, principle two. You could think of, you have that intersection providing housing choices with fostering storage ship, just to be like simplistic but hypothetical, it's like you're thinking about providing housing choices and you're thinking about density, but you're also thinking about environmental storage ships, so you're thinking about how much green space you could include in that density. And then that intersection is trying to bring a nexus and a togetherness to that. You know, but also you could include that in goal three and and two. You're 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 seeing that green space as one of those places where community members can have encounters, as we talked before, where you pass by and having uh maybe a legal conversation. But uh just thinking about that.
Well, and and you highlighted why we were going back and forth on whether we should go down or go across, because you could go either way and it was like, oh, you can make an argument and need a case, but yeah, yeah. Going across, we might be touching on some of the same points. It'll happen, but thank you for that also. I'm writing that down.
Uh Molly, you were also talking about the dark skies uh initiative.
Yeah. And I don't know how you don't, you know, you don't just relegate it to the uh commercial spaces, you know, it it we all would love the opportunity to be able to see the the stars in the skies. Um and so just I don't know if we would ever wanna put together something that had us all thinking about dark skies initiative and what that means to an area like ours.
Yeah, even in a housing development, uh the design of the streetlights can be very important for that. Um in residential areas, uh you don't wanna have a lot of light pollution and next to Van Cleef nature uh area or the
Well, and Goko it has some sort of light on the back that shines on the levee. Um that is, it's so bright.
It it's blinding.
It's blinding bright.
Like I can't, I can't see unless I do this.
What I recommend is it it might end up being goal two, principle two, but including that as as an interest in zoning. Because um like we talked before, that that's a roadmap for future uh works, for example, ordinances, because I've talked with the mayor, I I I don't see our enforceability with dark skies being very strong. Other than during special use permits.
What we can, I mean
Awareness.
Instead of like, yeah, just awareness, even at the pollinator festival, we could have a little booth about dark skies because they affect pollinators, they affect the birds and they affect the bees and all of all of the the moths and
But also our enjoyment too.
Right, but like that could be a way, if you had a pamphlet that you could hand out to people who live here to say, these are some simple things you can do to help with the dark sky initiative. I think that people would appreciate things like that.
The thing, the thing I would say following up on the two of you and and I I s- on a personal level, I I look at the stars. I'm learning the stars almost every night. I won't tonight because it's cloudy, but but just to put it in context, the gas station across from me or the Dollar General, Dollar General decently and is a light creator, the gas station is an enormous light creator.
Yeah.
And so, but here's the thing too, the balance that we have to do, and this is the trick as we go forward, not just now, is safety. So in other words, on the one level, you wanna be protective of light.
Right.
On the other hand, there's an issue of safety and it's not an easy balance, so.
So uh Josh here, if I can jump in, this is something that for ARB, I'm reviewing and we've looked through the small bit of code that references it and one of the primary things that anyone can do is to basically shield the top of your light to have it forced downwards rather than going up.
Hmm, that's a good point.
Yeah, and then any kind of shielding. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I also thought about the awareness aspect of it. And if we had like an event or some sort of awareness campaign, um I was thinking to myself, we could have, um first of all, we could have you know, some sort of shielding if we can find some that are cheap enough to kind of give to people and say, you can use this on your streetlights or not streetlights, but the big lights that they have. And and do that. And also with um trash, you know, like giving people um bags they can use in their car, you know, to keep I don't think that people are really doing this. Oh, I don't wanna mess up my car. I think they're like, I don't wanna pay for trash, so I'm just gonna throw it out the window, but we have to do something to make it part of the conversation. So giving them ways to remedy these things or you know, even showing them an example of that it would take not much to to do that for the town and for the area might be helpful.
Yeah, you you know, one other thing, maybe just on this goal two, principle two would be trying to think of the right way to word it, but there are designs of houses that are I mean, we're not building into a cliff, so to speak, but but that kind of a thing where it where we're mindful that it's it looks different because of the environment around it, so.
A green design, sure. Yeah.
I mean, sometimes I think of what, where should we be fifty years from now as a town and for sure, Scottsville has the potential to have housing or new businesses that are highlighting the the corridor of nature that we have around here and we wanna protect it.
Well, we'll continue to have those trash pickup. I think Liz is putting together some events for that.
I'll tell you what, the first time I ever did one of those, I was stunned how much I I was, that was a learning experience. Just I just never realized there was that much trash. My daddy taught me not to do that.
Do you remember the Indian who cried?
So also just to add uh for goal number three at the top uh about organizing uh events um and also about theming the town. Um previously, someone had recommended considering a uh equestrian theme. But through our discussions over the last month and and so um I think the pollinator theme has really come to the forefront. Um and I know Shannon, you mentioned uh using uh native uh plant species, so on and so forth, and new developments, really prioritizing those. So that's all written in there too, yeah.
Thank you.
I think it would be good to contact some of these, you know, like dark skies or, you know, um native plant society or whoever to kind of you know, get certifications or whatever it is, like the bee city, we have to have an event every year and all that kind of stuff. It would be good to kind of perpetuate it that way.
Well, what I liked about the pollinator uh bee city uh theming idea is that not only um it's it's great for an event, but also um different residents can have uh pollinator gardens and then there could be trails throughout the town. You know, maps that really draw people around the town to see these pollinator gardens. Um and really promotes certain types of planting throughout town. I think that could be a great theme. Um through our discussions, we thought that might be a better theme than having an equestrian theme because that you know, horses can be on trails and you know, you know, create create a lot of mud and also horse poop all over the all over the place, so maybe pollinators a little bit more friendly.
Sounds much friendlier.
So um basically, it seems we're pretty close on at least three of these four goals. Um I know Molly, you and I were brainstorming, we we dotted down bullet points, so I'd be glad to sit down and we can maybe um
Yeah, I'd like to sit down. Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so you um whoever wants to, I I'd be glad to schedule a Zoom and maybe Molly, uh myself or one other person can can be there and we can bounce more ideas or off and 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 then write up that first uh goal nu- number one, yeah.
Goal number one, the build out infrastructure.
Yeah. Great, so uh I think we're we're getting very, very close. Um so um what's left? Let's just uh recap that. So um we're gonna focus on goal one. Uh I think Lisa, goal two, uh this, you're just gonna wordsmith a little bit here and there, right?
But I'm going to add some more for sure, but it's the bulk of it's pretty easy, but I'm gonna, I I need to add more for principle three and then even a little bit more for principle two.
Okay, and then go ahead, go ahead.
I'm almost done with pictures too.
And the pictures, yes.
Yeah.
Um and then for three and four, you have those in your hand. Um so if you can uh kindly read through and offer any suggestions on that text, uh feel free to send it to me.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the packet, yeah.
And so what's in yellow is what is going to be filled in and will be most current as of when we're ready to go to publishing.
Yeah, I'll keep an eye on those figures.
Okay.
Um because I just need to plug in the most recent numbers and I think they're at this point of today.
Okay, cool. Do we have this um? Did you also email this?
Yes, okay, so Josh had a copy.
Okay, yeah, okay, great.
Awesome, thank you.
And uh I have uh one small section to uh write up. It's the summary of the uh town strategic plan. And how that relates to the uh comprehensive plan. So I'm I'm basically gonna summarize at a very high level um the document that Eileen uh led and then uh talk about which uh elements of that relate to the comp plan, because not not everything there has a strong connection with comprehensive planning, but a a lot of things do, yeah.
And Molly, how do you feel about goal one? Do you do you feel like you're ready to tackle it? Do you wanna tackle it? If you work with Lincoln on it?
Yeah.
I can um I could join that conversation too if you guys need other.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, um so Molly and uh Shannon.
I was gonna say too at some point.
And Lincoln, can you share with Shannon the work that was done in the last meeting on goal one to help the outline? I think she'll be, she'll really appreciate seeing that outline you put together.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So it's bullet points, um and then we can add or subtract bullet points and then write it out into a uh you know, several paragraphs, yeah, for each section.
It's all typed into the draft, right?
Yeah, it's typed into the draft, but I'll what I'll do, I'll um I'll select that, pull it into a separate document, just email it so it's easier to to see. It's very difficult to work in the full document, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to say about the comp plan, Lincoln?
Well, I guess the the only other thing I'll say is I had another meeting with Gordonsville um was it uh on Tuesday this week. However, they did, they didn't have a quorum. Uh they're they're really excited about uh what Scottsville has done and they really like the process. Uh they really like this diagram that was created, uh really talking about how a strategic plan can lead to a comp plan and then uh lead to updating of the ordinances. Um so um I pointed them to Scottsville strategic plans, they're using that as a reference. So uh Gordonsville is a town of about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred folks, so uh they see Scottsville as as a as a reference. I think that's really impressive. Um so that's awesome, yeah.
Thank you to you.
But Molly's the one that created the connection, so yeah, thanks Molly.
It was Javier, actually. But I did drive there twice, so.
That's more than I have to do.
So the the next uh planning commission meeting um that will be on the third of February?
Correct, Lincoln.
Okay. Excellent, I will uh I will be in San Diego, but I'll be zooming in from the West Coast.
Nice.
Yeah, another conference. So um also, I just also wanna mention that um an author has asked uh Javier and I if we'd like to write about this weaving approach in a in a academic book about uh decision making organizational strategy. So um we we are just gonna write a case study, a a draft and you know, you know, just the key ideas of what we're talking about just for this weaving approach, um if that's okay with everyone. But um I think it's a a great opportunity to for Scottsville to kind of show what it's doing to a a wider wider audience.
Yeah, absolutely.
Look, Lincoln, one thing I would say about that and same with Javier and having the same degree would be both of you have a lot of skin in the game in terms of what you've done. And as it presents an opportunity, your success, so to speak, is our success. So in other words, as you've been invited, obviously somebody noticed you were doing something that was noticeable. So have at it, do it, and Scottsville will only benefit by it. And that's what I said, like I've been coming back to this document, this is really helpful. That's one of the trickiest things in public policy of creating useful things, right? Isn't there? How many, how many books and pamphlets are pretty much useless because they're eight hundred pages long, right? I mean, they have information, but it's not easy for the user to use it, so that's wonderful, that's great. That's that's exciting. Tell us more about it when you do it.
I know, who goes?
Yeah, so this professor, Javier and I met uh at University of Virginia, maybe uh about a year ago, year and a half ago, maybe. And she's updating her book, uh she's at University of uh New Hampshire. And uh this book is used in a lot of uh communications study courses around the United States. So uh the book has about five or six case studies at the rear end. So the students around the U- United States could be using this as a, you know, a case study to to learn, yeah. So we'll we'll update you later, yeah.
Then Lincoln, I wanna touch uh I think on that zoning map. So I worked with uh Jack Maxwell on well, it's kind of perplexing. It took us a very long time and then uh Jack was successful in getting the copy of the map that Lincoln and I have been at this point a year. Seems with staff changes kind of got lost, but we tried to implement to the best of the ability, Jack and I um uh recommendations we had from uh from planning commission. Uh I need to share a digital version, because the colors will always change depending on if it's on a projector, what 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 type of screen you use at home, um how my printer's acting up. But I tried to adhere to the same colors that we had previously, at least, uh with some minor changes. Uh for example, you you won't see in 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 the draft, because it's shrunken down, uh the demarcation between the entrance corridor and and the historic district. But those will be uh much more obvious, the distinction on them. Um I'll work on the um the the part that isn't done is is the table at the bottom. And that's probably the final touch, but in regards to substance of changes. And that's probably the final touch, but in regards to substance of changes that uh, that, that uh, that we needed to do to make the the, the map more accurate, um, we're there on that. Flood plane uh overlays um in our different zoning districts. Uh, so there, there might be a little bit of tweaking, but, but we're much closer to uh what we wanted and what planning commission uh shared with us, they want out of the zoning map.
So is there a mapping of the historic district?
There is a, this would be a mapping of the historic district. There's an inventory of every historic district also. We needed to have that for the uh to get designated as a historic district. So there's, there's three of them over, every thirty years or something, a new version comes up for one reason or other. And it's just online, but it's, it's, it's literally an inventory. And the oldest one is like handwritten block out rather than just something typed up, so.
Did you ever find out where those historic district signs came from?
I didn't put together what you were saying. Those are ours.
Oh, okay.
I thought there was another one and I forgot. So we've been ordering those. So we took some down this year and then put some new ones up because they were getting a little bit uh long in the tooth.
Yeah, and uh it's no big deal to me at all. I just was curious if I was in the historic district or outside.
You're right outside.
Okay. Because I, it says it's part of the historic district on one of the maps that, you know, one of the tourist maps or whatever because of the cemetery, but I just was curious. I had no idea.
I think they were, were stretching historic uh
Yeah.
state uh and, and legal requirements to well, it is historic, but.
Gotcha. I, I was still listening to the impression that the whole town was considered a historic district.
The historic district is the original town limits, which is pretty much downtown. It's that square. Albemarle has like a historic South Albemarle, which is just like everything more or less like as marked down. But it isn't the same as what we do with, with an ARB exactly. So it's just designated on the state level. Because I was researching it once and I didn't even know that.
Doesn't it, isn't it because of the FEMA? Isn't, isn't, isn't it because of FEMA that we have that?
The passing story I got told is that that opened up funding for us because, you know, we're, we're there's no other town that is the center of three counties, one that earlier was like without a levy, you could lose a massive amount of history. Um, but I, I I was told that in passing and I, I think it's right. I have no evidence.
Sounds good.
Yeah, makes sense to me. But I did find a little letter from Congressman saying so, but, but other than that, it kind of makes sense in regards to uh the value that, that you would put in trying to preserve something uh as important in Scottsville and the history here.
Trying to remember where that's, somewhere around, I don't remember some, well, in the past. Remember that too, Mr. Mayor, um from somehow the historic district and FEMA are related to each other. I
Yeah, I, I think it all has something to do with levy from back in the eighties. I swear to God, I think the ARB came into existence. Historic District Command, Historic District Command, Lovey. It all, it all was co-mated.
And that's why it's, I think it's the stuff that's, but it's not out, it's, it's in the flood plain basically.
Yeah, yeah. And it's because the town was built in the flood plain and then the original town limits are within that flood plain. So it just, it kind of works out perfectly in that respect.
Those of us in the hills are not in that.
But you could be in the entrance corridor.
Yes.
Um, question about the notice requirements for a meeting. So I, I misunderstood you and you were very clear in your email, but I misunderstood you the last time about what the requirements were to go to a, a Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
And you, you said that we noticed it as in person. Can we notice things, especially in the winter, to say that in the event of snow or inclement weather, it will be remote? Can we do that? Is that okay? Like put in that kind of like, yeah, like a blanket statement, it will either be in person or if inclement weather, for example, when the county closes their offices, well, maybe we can move to remote in those situations.
Yeah, like I think, let me ask Jim, I think the most practice one other thought I had was like, i- is there an overarching way to ask for hybrid? And to like post as a hybrid. The issue was is that I followed up with you guys Friday. We had publicly noticed by Thursday. If we had, if we had the foresight Thursday, we could have just
Right.
noticed it as a, as a remote meeting or as an online meeting, and then we would have been able to.
Oh, so.
It was me.
And, yeah, no, I, I understand that. But yeah, so see from Jim, if there's a way that we could say, because, you know, February, we could very well have another snowstorm. And I know. I know. Well, that might affect town council, but that won't affect us.
Um, I'll look into it.
Or, or should we not sacrifice our snow days just because we have more technology available to us?
Yeah, let me ask about what, what might be a way to work around Saturday. I'll follow up with you guys.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? This, this is a record. I make a motion during this meeting.
So moved.
All right, all in favor? Meeting in turn to eight, ten P M.
Thank you guys. Have a good night.
Good night. Uh, the protection of the floods, that's always been my biggest interest. So and a lot of the stuff that we did in the park for a number of years, it was